Every morning we begin our day at Monocacy Elementary Center by reciting three pledges. The school pledge, the classroom pledge, and the pledge of the American flag. So we're going to share two of those with you, but then we ask you to go ahead and do the recitation.
I am a Monocacy Elementary Center student, and I am honorable, respectful, safe, honest, and I try every day to be the best student I can be.
Be safe, be kind, stay in your space, listen when someone's speaking, and follow the First Star!
We're going to join us on our feet, but on our right foot.
(Inaudible) through our eye of the United States of America and to the Republic of the forty states, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, Mr. Wolf. Mrs. Byes?
Here.
Mr. Kurtz?
Here.
Mr. Martino here, Mr. Lucas and Neil, here. Mr. Potts, here. Mr. Rathke?
Here.
Mr. Scott? Mr. Skidowski?
Here.
Mr. Wolf?
Here. Let the record show that Mr. Kurtz is participating via telephone. Okay. The procedures for public participation are printed in the inside, or backside of the blue cover. Everyone should have signed in in the back. If you haven't, please do so. If, at the appropriate time, if you would like to make a presentation to the board, please approach the podium, sign in there also, and then state your name and your address for the record, and your three minutes will begin once you start speaking.
Connor?
Yep. Okay. Under agenda edits, we have several. It's not under, your paper says six, it's actually 10. Personnel approvals, there's two, A to A. Jane Wood, special education aide, MEC, 183 days, three and a half hours a day, effective 10/21, due to a resignation. Under C, motion to approve the following transfers. Add C, modify C, Beth Robbins. The amount is listed on the agenda as 1349, but should be 1381 per hour. Under D, motion to approve, motion to approve the following appointments. One, B, professional, Hannah Kraft, long-term substitute, special ed, life skills, replaces A, Bentz, 250, 611 per day, approximately 1128, 16, to approximately 3, 3 of 17, approximately 59 and a half, half-days, or 15,239. We're striking E on the agenda edits. Under, under programs, 11, we're going to add A. Motion to approve the honors capstone pilot program for art courses at the Daniel Boone High School, 2016-17 school year, honors 2.1. Under 15B, we're striking that. And under 16, I'm going to be adding B, discussion on Mr. Kurtz's attendance. Is there any other agenda items, agenda edits?
Mr. Wolf, I believe Mr. Kurtz has, in addition to throwing in...
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Wolf and Mr. Martino. I reported from the C and I committee meeting that we had approved and recommended to the board that we add an advanced placement human geography course at Daniel Boone Area High School. And I'd like that to be voted upon, if at all possible, so we can give the administration the ability to start working to put that in place for next academic year.
Okay, so what's your, under 11 programs, what's your motion?
Motion to approve the addition of advanced placement human geography at Daniel Boone Area High School.
Human geography?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf, one small question and one change. So on the agenda edits, just to make sure I'm clear, so what should be 10A to A, Jane Wood resignation, is that, why is that an addition to?
Can you respond to that, Catherine?
10A to A, is that repli, that's under, under, 10A is retirements and resignations. There's professional, there's classified. Classified under 2A, that one's actually a resignation.
Kurt, on the original agenda, 10A to A, what is why? So is Jane Wood an addition to?
So it would really be 10A, 10A to C.
C, yeah.
Okay. And the other, just the formality, but on the same agenda, we have under there Finance Committee, the November 3rd date is not, we don't have the exact date yet, but so it's 9A, 9A, 9A.
Okay, so the next committee meeting for the Finance Committee will be in November at a date to be determined. Thank you. Is there any other edits?
The same culture for facilities, we're working on trying to accommodate these.
Yeah, I'd like to say the same thing about C and I.
Yeah, the reason, the reason for the public, just so the reason why we're rescheduling these is every other year or so, we have, we convene the board at the Burke's Career and Technology Center, the East Campus. During that time, the board is treated to a meal. As part of that meal, you go through some orientation that they have, they want to show off one of their, some or more of their programs. So you, it's a way that we can show support, but there's only so many dates available as other districts are doing the same thing. November 14th happened to be the date that worked best for us, so we're going to be rescheduling these Finance Committee meetings that would have normally occurred on the 14th.
Mr. Wolf, one other item. At the last meeting, I gave a legislative report and an update on Peasars, and tonight under old business, I'd like to just expand on that.
So under 15, we're going to call it D, Mr. Martino, will hold a discussion on Peasars. Are there any other edits? I'm ready. I'm ready. We're going to do the recognition for the kindergarteners.
We'd like to thank our kindergarteners for coming this evening, and Mrs. Harris as well. Can we give them a round of applause? All right, can we start with Jack Jordan? Blair Seiler, come on up. Parker and Willis. And Cameron Bennett. And thank parents for bringing them tonight and for helping with that toward the pledge of allegiance at the center, everybody's very small. Thank you.
Okay, for those families that were recognized, you're more than welcome to stay, but if you would like to go, you're, now's the time. Just for the board members, Mr. Rathke had asked for, under new business, we add 16B, discussion on building security. Okay, under other announcements, the, we ratified an agreement between the district and the Daniel Boone Federation of Support Staff, also the AFL-CIO, for three years, retroactive to last year. So we ratified that on our last meeting, they filed suit two days later, so that's a, just an announcement. As I said before, the November 14th committee, the whole, would be, will be held at the East Campus of the Burke's Career and Technology Center in Oley. If you're interested in, the public is welcome to attend. The center is located at 3307 Freedensburg Road, Oley, PA, 19547, and the GPS does take you actually to the building, so. All right. Under recognitions, we already did the students, Mr. Helsner, JROTC, imitation of veteran, military, and police appreciation football game, rival football game between Daniel Boone and Exter.
Again, in the moment where this thing is warming up so very good, you see the advertising one, I wanted to take a, a second too, in addition to advertising the event and encouraging attendance, I wanted a couple of folks. To my left, we have Girl Sergeant Gonzalez and Sergeant Camari, they're local armor recruits, but also have been spending a lot of time helping us to train the kids, to train cadets, and they really enhanced the program a lot. So I'm very grateful to have them on board, along with Sergeant Michael Nowman, who couldn't be here tonight, so it's given a sense of realism and real quality to the training these kids are going through, it's just by fact, so thank you for coming. Just wanted to promote our advertising event coming up for November 4th. The event is a military police, our veteran military and police appreciation night, scheduled for the football game, the nice headwinds on November 4th coming up. A lot of great things have come out of this, we've got some good sponsorship, the National Guard is sponsored, the BFW has sponsored us, sent us some money, helped us together, Keystone Villa, purchase one of each of these flags that we see up here, so seven total, just about $600 of flags that the, some of the elementary school kids will be presenting during the flag collars, are creating the flags during halftime during the games. In addition to, these flags, we have other individuals becoming, will be the Mission Barbecue. They're coming to augment the service of our concession stand because they're anticipating being in a rival football game, very large attendance, plus hopefully a lot of community veterans and military police come out, and people in general come out to support these organizations for all that they've done for society, the police for their local level and the military for our state and our national level, so we'd love to see a lot of you out there. Briefly mentioned Keystone Villa, Michael Jacobs, I'm sorry, Mick Jacobs, our teacher, created the phone design. Keystone Villa has purchased, in addition to flags, they're purchasing 150 t-shirts that we're able to allow, give 50 of these t-shirts away, we're going to use air cannons and do like to do the hot bolts at the Philadelphia Flyers team, or whatever that group is down there, the Phillies. We're going to be firing these in the crowd at the high arc, not direct trajectories. And they've also, in order to help the JROTC, they often let us sell to 100 of these, $10 apiece, to help us purchase PT uniforms for the cadets, so that when we go out to do our physical exercise and training, we can now be uniformed doing that, so that's something we're looking forward to. Again, we just ask that you come out, support these teams. We have anticipation from MEC all the way up to, and BEC, and AEC, the middle school, we have cadets from middle school and high school, so we're really trying to make this a cross-the-hole district, show the community, show, you know, the nation, you know, what Daniel Boone is able to do, what our kids are able to do. So I want to give a hand of applause to these cadets that showed up tonight, these kids have done phenomenal things in the last seven, seven and a half months, so thank you guys for that, too. Lastly, just to let you know, today we went up over 43 cadets at following our parent and teacher, so our parent recruiter, Cadet Social, last Wednesday, and we're now up, we have eight, eighth graders that have come up to join the ranks, and we're up over 43 right now, and we look to grow through the next few months, so thank you again for your continued support, for the opportunities that we're creating for these young men
Mr. Helsner, how did you come by the idea? Tell us how this originated, where the, where the idea first came from.
Well, I tell you, the idea with me, first of all, I'm a veteran myself, did several years, and, but what really clicked with me is I realized that not a lot of places do much for veterans as far as recognition, a lot of defense. So I've been working with Master Veteran Sergeant Andrew Worley from OJ Roberts School, he's been mentoring me, so I know what I'm doing, the capacity that I'm serving in, and he was telling me about what they do, they do like a veteran's dinner, but you know, I said, we can do better than that, we're doing it. You know, so we thought about something that needs to be used, and figured that this football game opportunity would be nice, and then when you factor in the shootings against police officers down in Baton Rouge, and down in Texas, I was just shocked that in American society, that's happening here, and so we really need to do something to tell these law enforcement officers that, you know, we stand behind you as well. So between wanting to acknowledge military veterans and really wanting to say thank you to the law enforcement, that's kind of sort of where this idea came out of. Then I talked to the cadets about it, and they came back with some ideas, and so with cadets involvement, and we worked towards a goal, so we've really grown into a very large, and hopefully a very big night, you know, that everybody will enjoy, and hopefully let these people know that, you know, we're thankful for the veterans and military, and what we've set to do to do what we're trying to do.
Well, thank you and your cadets for all the hard work you, you put into putting this thing together, it's, it really speaks volume about your, your program and representing the district as our ambassador. Thank you.
Mr. Helsner, who are the sponsors again? Sponsors that we have right now, we have Mission Barbecue, they got corporate permission to bring, probably two winter vehicles to help supplement the concession stands and sport jerseys. They're talking concession stand, and primarily, primarily to the veterans, homeless veterans. They, in order to, I'm not promoting charities, but they help a lot of homeless veterans, so that's primarily around the Christmas season, what they're going to use for seats for. In addition to that, we have the American Legion, which has given support, has with a cash contribution previously. The BFW has recently sent a cash contribution to offset the cost. The Keystone Villa in Douglasville has dropped quite a bit. Oh, yeah, so not only did they buy the seven flags, the t-shirts, they're also purchasing over 600 of the flags that we can hand out, the little four by six inch flags, people to wave during the ceremony, then, I think I got, I think, I forgot the seven, I think I forgot what that, yes, and of course the National Guard that has, you know, contributed constantly to our cadets. Yes, the National Guard, we've got a 10-reel striker vehicle coming in, there's only five units in the United States to have these 10-reel strikers. Defense Department Army National Guard is the only National Guard unit that has them. It is very hard to fit these vehicles, so I requested, and they were approved, to bring the strikers down from Redding. So they're bringing, the strikers coming as well as two Humvees. Defense Department State Police is sending a cruiser and a couple patrolmen down to interact with the, during the 5 o'clock to 6 o'clock hour, they interact with community driven community activities. The latest thing, the Redding Police Department Collar Guard will be presenting for the National Anthem, you know, this is a very, very professional collar guard, so they'll be out there for the National Anthem, plus they'll be leading the parade of flags during the halftime show. The Exter and Boone Band, for those who don't know, are combining into one band, playing some pieces in honor of the military and the police. And several boy scout troops and girl scout troops are also going to be in attendance, so.
They're having a great presentation. I'm hoping for military precision.
We're shooting.
We also got a senior night, so it's going to be, we need to...
We're shooting for that. George has come in, got it down, everything, every minute, every hour.
Yeah, he got it stacked, it's down great, thank you.
Okay. Are there any presentations by the public on agenda items? Do we have a banner you need? Where's our timer?
It's on the 2032 East Main Street, those fellows. I did not, I did all good or not?
Very well.
I was hoping you'd have an agenda change on this use of factories, the true talent in the studio was, I was, yes, was, I have many difficulties by the corporation, I would like to, that seemed like an enormous amount of money, could then pay and use it as one of our fillings or a few hours or a few days. And then looking up here, that's the main $35 custodial fee for two hours of this, right? $3,500 to $3,400. I mean, once again, are we, are we showing it to the officer or what? And then, you know, I'm just saying, it seems like headcount always comes around or sort of turn or backs to it. And we have a whole staff on here, we have a whole custodial staff on there, what's the one going for all that money?
Yeah, how, Mr. Small, can you comment as to how that number was arrived at, or Ms. Haynes, how that number was arrived at?
I can look at the individual forms, but this looks like it's not only the $35 for the custodial fee, which may or may not be charged depending on how much the building, how much custodial use we have. We have the option of charging $35 an hour for any, if our custodians have to come in or contract, the custodians come in and have to clean up a big mess, there's one of them that actually cleans up after themselves, so we wouldn't charge them at all. So we have the option of charging up to so many hours depending on when they're here for custodial.
It covers the microphone, the system.
It also covers the microphone, because we have to have a physical person here monitoring for the microphone and the speakers and all of that equipment, so there's sound, thank you, sound system.
Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, although not listed in here, the consent agenda, unless there's a objection, the consent items would be 8A to 10D4. Give everybody a moment, if you, Connor, you, could you hear me?
Yes.
If there's any objections to having something removed from the consent agenda, now's the time to tell us.
What's the number?
8A to 10D4, that's, 10D4 is the end of the volunteers, extracurricular volunteer list.
Why is it not by answering that? Because sometimes there's approvals there of their businesses, not, okay?
I just keep the number in the same on the cow, so you know that A is this always across the board, is what I'm saying.
Because, you know, we, what would normally go in there would be to pay bills, approval, you know, those type of things.
Thank you.
Mr. Wolf, I, Mr. Wolf, I don't have anything removed from the listed agenda, but 10B, the unpaid leave, we had a brief discussion on that at the committee on hold. I called the two policies that impact unpaid leave, we are not following policy. The policy states that unpaid leave in excess of personal days may be granted, not just one or two days here and there. And Mr. Harris, with the terrible attendance rate that we have and the need for substitute teachers. teachers, I mean, if these people have already been approved, I don't want to see it changed, but going forward, I don't think we can afford to just give away days off when it doesn't follow policy.
Mr. Harris, didn't we have a discussion about that with you and policy, where you would ask the Committee, the whole board, to give you a little bit more, you know, to clank down all those approvals a little bit?
Yes, with this one in particular, I contacted a couple of folks on here, but this one was part of when they were hired.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Mr. Martino, but Mr. Harris, you have only one day on here. Three of them are in, that's a lie. The one was prior to hiring, you agree, that's really, it's only E, it's one day where.
This, the, the E, I spoke to.
Yeah, that's really the only one really injured that, the payment, and I, I mean, that's because I agree with.
I think there's going to be full board, I'm just saying, the board, there's going to be full board discussion on the enforcement of the policy, and upcoming needs of enforcement.
Well, until there's a discussion, the policy is the policy. Like I said, I'm not asking you to change this, if these people have already been.
Mr. Harris has some concerns about past precedents, though.
No.
But going forward, until the board decides to change it, we need to follow policy.
I can explain it. The, on B, that person was hired with the, with the understanding that they would have this day off, okay? E, I spoke to directly. It is a personal family issue, and the person's been here over ten years, a great employee, and has a family need, is taking other days off, and is requesting to be out of town for this day. This person's taking other days off also, to take care of a personal family issue. And that's why, the rest are all on FML. But I understand what you're saying, this, but I challenged this person on that, and they provided material.
I was just talking about going forward.
Going forward, yes.
I think that's what we want, I think that's what we want, then, Mr. Martino, it's just his personal intention to, it's just not randomly granted, I think he's assured that that's what he's doing, he's using his discretion according to the policy.
But I am following the policy, but I, I did vet each one, and I can only ask so much, but this person was forward with more information, and I said, "I'm not here to challenge you, I just want to make sure," because I knew I would be asked this, because of the one day. There are other days this person is taking, and this person is a really dedicated Boone employee, and it was something I did.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Along those lines, I just have a question on the way we, this isn't appropriate time to ask regarding, with, I mean, I understand FML is, you know, is guaranteed under, under the wall. The, do we require the use of sick leave for that before they do unpaid? Or, I mean, I understand there's a plus and minus, some pay, we're not paying for it, and we're paying a substitute. But, the other downside is that, then, that leave continues to accrue, and they can use that at a later time, and/or at retirement, so.
Under a current contract, you're eventually going to pay for it.
That's what I.
And on top of that, FML, which I'm very familiar with, guarantees you the time off, guarantees you your job cell, it's not guarantee you the type of leave you're using.
Typically, I believe our policy provides that if the leave qualifies for sick days, when you will, you do use your sick days, they are, they count against FML.
So, that also then, to drill down, since we're discussing it, I think I had mentioned this, but, I don't see, so FML is always a complaint, because there is some extenuating, I believe, this one's running from February through December, obviously that's more than twelve weeks. So, obviously, part of that should be unpaid leave without benefits, because I don't believe, believe that it's, we, we do pay our share in benefits, FML, but I believe once they're unpaid, they have to pay full, the full amount of benefits, I'm not saying, if you're wrong in that, but.
It's ten months.
So, that, that should be fully burned out, so that, you know, that where we are, and we wish we paid, paid benefits, or believe you was out for it for a year, that, you know, that might be be that one out of over.
Mr. Harris, long before you got here, we had a discussion on family medical leave, and the fact that we don't have a personnel department, I don't think our administration understood the time, or fully understands it. And I think it's something we need to get a better handle on.
Is there any, any other discussion? Well, we need a, first, we need a motion for eight A to ten D.
We made a request for Brian, and he showed us.
Well, you know, I think, this, this leave, if it's reached correctly, doesn't start till February, and suggested we pull that, and do it back next.
So, I don't want to approve it, then, to have to go back and say.
I would, I would pull that, I don't review, I can review it, District Administration, and we'll put it on next month.
For ten B C?
Ten B, one C.
Ten B, one C. All right, Connor, do you hear that? We're pulling ten, one, B C. Okay. Is there any other?
I'm just going to make a motion.
Okay.
I made a motion for eight, nine, and ten, as amended, with the additions on the agenda edits, and removal of ten B one C.
Motion by Ms. Tardowski, second by Mr. Okus O'Neil. Any board discussion? Mr. Martino?
Roll call.
No, no, consent agenda.
You want a roll call vote?
No.
Just the policemen?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight zero.
Okay, brings us to programs. Under eleven, have any motions for any of the items listed in the programs?
I will make a motion for eleven, as amended. And my, my understanding, just, I guess, to clarify, is eleven A and B were for honors programs, so then, everything else got, the minutes got bumped down to C D E, is that correct?
Yeah, the motion to approve, yeah, motion to approve the honors capstone would actually be E.
Oh, yeah, okay, so.
And the motion to approve the human geography would be F.
All right, well, then, let me, actually, let me do this, let me make a motion for eleven A through D, which would be the minute approval. And, and meetings scheduled, sorry.
Can you, can you repeat that motion?
I'm, I'm making a motion for eleven A through D, for the minutes of the schedule. Just seeing if anybody has objections to that.
Motion by Mrs. Tardowski, second by Mrs. Bates. Any board discussion?
So, I did see that, I guess, the, the, did these minutes accomplish the changes we made as far as the time?
Yeah.
So, I did see that, I did have, I did think about it, so, got here. So, someone is on the website, and they go, and they understand what that, what those numbers are, so that someone wants to understand where to find this stuff, and actually, because obviously, there's just numbers there, and no one knows what they're referring to, so that maybe we should, you know, we can have the website, or on the, or something that says that the numbers in reference to five day on the time.
Maybe make a rank, but just put something on it.
Some post that one, one of those.
But for the, for these minutes, simple, you know, asterisk with, you know, with parentheses states the, the time index of the meeting recording. Could you do that, just, and just put that on top of all our minutes, so someone would Is there any other board discussion? Roll call vote, please, Mr. Martino?
Mrs. Bates?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Martino, yes. Mr. Okus O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Rathke?
Yes.
Ms. Tardowski?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero.
Okay, do I have a motion for eleven E? Motion to approve the honors capstone pilot program for our courses at the high school twenty sixteen, seventeen school year.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rathke, second by Ms. Tardowski. Board discussion?
I have no discussion, I, if Mr. Kurtz could just recap.
This is the second, oh, you want the capstone?
It's only the second, yeah, if he was to recap for the board and the public exactly what this is.
Do you hear that, Mr. Kurtz?
Yes, I'd be happy to give another update here. This program, if it is enacted by the board, is a one-year pilot program to allow, that would authorize the administration to work with the art department, to put together a, a program that will allow students who take elective art classes to complete a capstone project, which will be determined by the administration. And if they satisfactorily, if a student satisfactorily completes that project, it's all on the student, then our administration will note on that student's college, college trans, excuse me, on their high school transcripts for college applications, that that class was an honors class. So, they will receive honors credit for doing work that is of an honors quality. And that's on the administration to determine and ratify the guidelines, but this is really to see how it works for the first year. And if this program goes well, it's my hope that we'd be able to turn any elective into a honors class, if the student so chooses. It's all on the student, it won't create any more work for, for staff in terms of, and won't have to teach to multiple levels. This is on students who choose to go above and beyond the requirements of an academic course, and demonstrate that they have the skills to warrant it being honors level work. So, I think it's a, a free way, really, to offer more, and allow students, if they have a passion for a certain subject, to really bribe, and will recognize them for their hard work, and hopefully it will help them in their academic careers.
Thank you, Mr. Kurtz. Does anyone have any other questions for Mr. Kurtz? Mr. Martino, roll call the vote, please.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Martino, yes. Mr. Okus O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Rathke?
Yes.
Ms. Tardowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Bates?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero.
Do I have a motion for eleven F? The motion to approve the human geography program at the high school?
Some of, second.
Motion by Mr. Rathke, second by Mr. Potts. Board discussion? Mr. Kurtz, would you like to provide an overview of this also?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Wolf. I mentioned this at the Committee of the Hole, and the Curriculum Instruction Committee has unanimously recommended that we add AP Human Geography to our high school course selection guide. What's special about this Advanced Placement course is that it will be offered to students in ninth grade. And for students who take Advanced Placement courses, typically those courses are taken in eleventh and twelfth grade. So, there's only a certain amount of periods of the day where students can enroll in these courses. But if students are very interested in geography and the humanities, they can enroll in this course in ninth grade, and that will mean that they can get more AP credit. And this AP credit can, of course, be transferred, if they score above a, a certain number on the AP exam, they can receive college credit for courses, for this course and other AP courses they took in high school. And that will allow them to perhaps graduate early, and perhaps they can save money by doing that. So, this is just another way how, where it enhances the curriculum at Daniel Boone, and getting more options to our students.
Okay, Mr. Kurtz, this is going to be something that students can enroll in for next year.
Right.
The AP Human Geography, okay?
Yes.
Can I ask Mr. Kurtz a question? And I'm not, I'm not stating, I'm not asking, because I'm against it all, I'm just asking if we can facilitate this class with our assisting staff, and if there's other extenuating costs that go along with that in the class.
Were you able to hear that, Mr. Kurtz?
Yes, I was, and I, we will, we're going to be educating the same number of students in ninth grade, humanities or geography, either way, so it won't require any new staff. However, we likely will have to purchase the required textbooks, and the teacher will likely have to go to some training, just like other AP teachers. Mr. McKnight, or Mr. Hulley, may be able to speak to this a little bit more, if that answer isn't satisfactory.
And, and I, I do understand we're educating the same number of students, I just didn't know if this is adding a class, who's going to add another classroom or teacher to teach if we have that M D slot in the schedule, that's all, so.
I don't have the answer to that personally, I don't think they've begun to develop the schedules yet, but I don't believe this will be a, a major cost to the district, and I don't foresee necessarily adding a new class, but that's for the, the high school administration to determine.
I can add a little bit of coverage to that if you'd like. It's going to cost us about six thousand dollars, I'm going to take into account the training of the teacher, and the additional textbooks, I'm anticipating about possibly two sections of that. You shouldn't need, you won't need a new teacher for that, because of being place of the ninth grade social studies required.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Did you hear that, Mr. Kurtz?
I did.
Any other discussion? Mr. Martino, roll call, please.
Mr. Martino, yes. Mr. Okus O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Rathke?
Yes.
Ms. Tardowski?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero.
Okay, under twelve, policy, Mrs. Bates, do you want to, is there anything noteworthy you would like to state for the record?
Policy Review Committee will not.
With your microphone?
The agendas are all will be made on the twenty-eighth, actually, sorry, the agenda will be created, period, and we're progressing through the two-hundred series with Policy Review Series, and we'll have some, best of March one tonight, we'll be pushing local reports, and we'll have a wonderful policy.
Okay, and you, you said the next meeting is when?
The twenty-eighth.
November twenty-eighth?
November twenty-eighth, not the twenty-first, I'm sorry.
Okay, so the next Policy Review Committee meeting will be held here, on November twenty-eighth, six o'clock.
Okay, wait a second. Well, it will have to be to be, to be determined, I'm sorry. And we'll discuss. I did realize the school is actually closed that day, so, it'll be a Tuesday.
So, amend that to, to be determined.
Thank you.
Okay. Facilities, Ms. Tardowski?
We did not meet in October, so I don't want to have anything to update under that, and we will be trying to schedule a meeting either joint with finance, if we can make it work, or on our own, if we can't.
Okay, so that's also data to be determined. Okay, under transportation, do I have a motion for any one of those items?
I'll make a motion for fourteen A.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Okus O'Neil, second by Mr. Rathke.
Could you just recap while we're done this for the board?
Yep, I can do that. BIS were previously open with respect to the requests for proposals dated August eighteenth, upon opening or receiving those proposals, I should say, not BIS, I received those proposals only one. proposals, only one proposal was received. The board determined that they wanted to provide an opportunity for potential contractors, other potential contractors to submit a proposal. As the prior proposal was already open, we needed to reject that proposal and authorize a new request for proposals, which is in substantially the same form as the prior RFP. The one addition was for child reminder safety alarms to be on all vehicles accommodating eleven or more passengers. Otherwise, the terms and conditions of the RFP are the same. The submission deadline is October 31st, so the selection process has been condensed. And the requirement for a pre-proposal meeting has been deleted, but there's still an opportunity for contractors to submit requests for classifications if there are any questions with respect to the proposal.
Any other discussion?
Mr. O'Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Rathke?
Yes.
Ms. Tardowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Byes?
Yes.
Mr. Kurz?
Yes.
Mr. Martino, yes. Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero.
For 14B, the transportation committee's next meeting is October 25th. Mr. O'Neal, is there anything you want to add?
I would just say that tomorrow we are having the final presentation, final routing software presentation, and I anticipate that we'll make a determination as to what software we recommend to the full board, so we'll be right through that.
Here?
Yeah, we'll be here at 6 o'clock tomorrow.
Okay, moving on to old business. The meeting minutes, we had a brief discussion on that with the notation of explaining what the timestamp is in parentheses to be added to the board minutes. Is everyone satisfied with how they appear? Seeing a lot of nodding heads, we'll continue with that for another year, then we'll forget what we decided and bring it back again.
Thank you.
All right. On C, update on the district newsletter?
Okay. I'm receiving information from all the committees and board members on their bios and committee information for the newsletter. If you haven't sent it already to me, please do as soon as possible. We're putting it together. We're looking at four different companies for processing. Staples, BCIU, BCTC, and a local company, Olive Arts, which are all coming in, well, Staples wants $26,000, which is, well, $26,700 to print. We stopped talking to them. The BCIU wanted $6,200, the BCTC wanted $27,000, and Olive Arts wanted $19,800. And it varies from $19,800 to $3,200 depending on how much of printing, folding, insert they do. So we're still looking at the best pricing and the format. They're also willing to do the design of the newsletter for an additional $585, which still puts it well below what it cost last year. So if you can get me the information, we need to do pictures. I'm still getting information from the building principals for information, but we should have something together within about a week that we could look at for information. I need more and more information from you all, so if you can get that to me as soon as possible, we can put something together for you. So hopefully, we're looking for us begin November, but depending on when we can get the information. We also need to do photographs of you all. So when all of you can be together, we're talking maybe next board meeting for the group picture, or you're not going to be here. It's hard to get everyone together. So tonight, if we can do individual pictures and, I don't, whenever we can get together.
Okay. So if you, if you still owe Mr. Harris your bio or your committee, your committee action items or items of interest, please get them to him as soon as possible, or I begin the shaming process publicly after that.
And I did say under 100 words, which some of you gave me 10 words. So if I can have maybe over 50 words and under 100 words. I'll settle for favorite colors, favorite sandwich, anything along. I need some information to put in the newsletter.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to 15D.
We had an agenda edit. We were going to talk about my legislative report.
That's 15D, your, oh, your Peasers?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, I was kidding to that.
I was going to say.
I thought you said 15D.
That's, I did, I did add 15D. That was your discussion.
So anyway. At the last meeting, I talked about the impact of Peasers on our annual budget, the million dollars a year on average, that our cost increases and the fact that our senior citizens do not get anything substantial to do with that. Our senior citizens, just for the record, it was just announced, received no increase in their social security or pension checks for 2016. And as come in January, they will get the grand sum of three tenths of a percent increase. Not three percent, three tenths of a percent. In the meantime, the legislature is proposing an amended Senate bill 1071. And even if that comes to a vote, its chances of passing don't seem too clear. They have not done any actuarial studies on the bill to see what it will do, but, and this is a quote, "It does seem clear that this proposal will not save school districts any money in the short term." So I just wanted to report, you know, an update that we're not going to get any Peasers relief anytime soon.
Thank you, Mr. Martino. Any questions for Mr. Martino on that? Okay. Moving on to new business, Mr. Harris, do you want to discuss the reality show that wants to come to Daniel Boone?
Okay, this is something that's been in the works for a few months now. That is, we've been vetted by a Sirens Media Left Field Entertainment Group from Lifetime and A&E TV. They would like to shoot a reality show at the high school using Daniel Boone students and staff. It's a, the show would be showed on Lifetime or A&E. They currently do a number of other reality shows. Basically, the show is about five young adults who would come back to school, who would act as mentors to our students and there's a, there's a surprise twist to it, which I can't say publicly, but they would be mentors to our students. Basically, these students would come back and show the positives of being in high school. And it's an aspirational show. I've been working with Mr. Subers on the legal side of it to keep our district safe. There is a fee, we will be paid a fee for the use of the building. It would take about a semester to shoot. They use mini cameras. I've seen them. They've already walked through the school. They like the atmosphere. They like Mr. McKnight as principal. They like the staff. They like the teachers. Any fears about who's going to be in it, there is background checks of the participants, of the photographers, camera people, producers, everything is background checked, especially for them also. Should not disrupt the day-to-day operations of our school. Anyone who doesn't feel comfortable being in it does not have to be in it. Anyone under 18 would have to get permission from a parent or guardian. Teachers would sign off. Staff would sign off, everything.
Is this there?
I can take questions. It's like an undercover boss.
So the students don't know?
The students would know that they're on, that they're going to be in a show. They would know that there are at least five students who are in the building who are being followed and documented on their coming back to school to, maybe they didn't go to the prom. Maybe they, we looked at sports, they can't play sport, but they didn't go to the prom. Maybe they dropped out of school. Them staying back in school and working with our students to be mentors and it's a social experiment basically saying, will our students be more receptive to their peers in positive advice versus adults?
Has this ever taken place in any other school?
No. Not that I know of, so far.
I fear this is a distraction to day-to-day classes.
Well, the cameras are about this big, a little bit bigger than this. And they place them in various points. And from what I'm told and what I've seen, not much of a distraction. You don't have the big cameras. Like we did the movie over the summer, it's not like that where they're setting up lighting. This is a reality where they're following people to and from class and talking.
And legal counsel?
I had reviewed the initial proposed contract, which was very, very one-sided. Basically allowed them to come in and access the building. And one of my concerns was the district being cast in an unfavorable light. They expressly reserved the ability to do that. So that was one of the clauses that I've struck. So they would not be able to cast the district in an unfavorable light. I also required consent of students, again, reminders, their parents, the district staff, any other persons associated with the district would have to consent to being included in this. They also basically imposed any liability arising from this endeavor on the district. I reversed that, deprimed those provisions. And basically, they said that, you know, both parties would maintain insurance, the district has certain insurances, and would assume liability for their own actions, leveraging certainly their own harmful actions. I also put, I also changed the provision to say that they couldn't use our name, I should say, the school district's name, signage, trademarks, anything like that without our specific permission. So that was kind of another way, hopefully, that if we didn't appreciate the depiction, that at least we would not be identified in any of the footage. So it's a little complex. I provided the redlined version of the contract to Mr. Harris. I welcome the board's review on that, but they were, my main concern was that we would be cast in an unfavorable light without any recourse. So I tried to protect this. Now, you're not fully protecting that way, but I mean, the one thing is they can't use our, and I don't know that they're going to accept these provisions. They haven't responded yet.
They're still reviewing.
Yeah, so I mean, they may not be willing to accept those types of provisions. I mean, if the board's interested, we could proceed with this negotiation, but I certainly would want the board to know exactly what the final contract terms were with respect to these important issues before, you know, it was approved.
Do the cameras small, the boom lights and lighting?
Nope, small, little, like GoPros. Small camera, a little bit bigger than a GoPro.
I'd say my biggest fear of the pause, you know, these kids today are so wrapped up in their 15 years of fame and getting on social media and trying their best to get videos out there and everything else, and this would be a huge distraction for them to attempt to try and get on this show or when they're walking through the halls or trying. I just, I'm concerned about the disruption and the fee they're providing. I don't see it worth, and it's $30,000.
Yes.
And worth that kind of money for that. The past production we did was the actual hours, so that was a different, a different piece. This is during school hours, so he personally, I don't see real too much upside here. If someone can tell me otherwise, I'm willing to listen, but I don't see the upside to it.
I mean, when you think of it, somebody's going to be walking around with a camera and be walking through the halls, you know, there's kids coming the opposite way. Now, somebody's got to review all that video and say, well, does that person, that's Jane, that's John, that's Eric, you know, do they have a waiver? Do they have a waiver? Do they have a waiver? And it just seems like someone from, I'm just throwing out a concern, someone's going to have to, you know, be the person administering this to say, all right, well, these are the people identified that we saw, and then, you know, make sure they have all their approvals from their parental or otherwise, otherwise I would imagine the production company would have to pixelate their image out.
I'm sure it's staged.
Do we have anything proposed production or refusal?
You know, the typical, they own this outright, you know, every, all the film, all the product, they own outright and they retain total control of that. So that's my concern as far as, you know, protecting our image. I forgot to mention, we did obviously put in criminal background check requirements, job clearance requirements for any personnel dealing with district staff, and that they would restore our premises. You know, they actually even reserve the right to make minor alterations to the premises and put signage up or we're requiring them obviously to restore our premises to a pre-existing condition. They, I mean, I don't think that they would negotiate their control over that final product. It's an issue of the protections we can build in to the identification, you know, the participants, the identification of Daniel Boone Area School District, any of this final product. We reserve the right, I mean, if there's anything that would constitute defamation, I mean, obviously that was like, rights preserved. But there's, like I said, one of the things that they had was an express reservation to include material that may cast participants or the district in an unfavorable light and retain full control of it. I mean, that's what they want. That's not, you know, I just can't recommend keeping that, you know, surrendering those rights.
They want to, they want to reject the law.
Now, if they accept the terms and conditions as presented, again, the district or the board can review that. If there's anything else that the board's concerned about that you feel I may have missed, you know, that can subject to further negotiation. I mean, you would have to have by any of the parents ultimately, if there's a sign on for the head of students.
I mean, are they showing kids how to, you know, go to get the film, how to do the edits, how to put the shows together, what the production costs are, what the break even is, what, kids that want to go into film, I mean, are they showing them all the, I mean, there's actually some practical knowledge our kids could get out of this. Maybe that makes some more sense to me, but.
That was also part of it, since we did the movie over the summer, there were some learning experiences that we had. And sound, light, staging, it was all part of it. They could come in and help, see how the editing is done, how the filming is done. It's a totally different process than where the movie was. This is a small sort of, like I said, a GoPro-type camera, but they offered, since we had done the movie also, and I remember some students were interested, they would also be included in how it's done behind the scenes. We have a large arts department. One of our wall of fame folks is in the arts. So they were interested in doing that also. That's one of the benefits of having them on campus here, is to show behind the scenes. You don't have to go to New York or LA or Vancouver to do this. This is something that can be done local. But right now, we're still just in the conversation stage, bringing it before you all to have discussions. Just got the information over to our solicitor.
So it may be a no-go?
It's a possibility to sell, and to show and sell, you gotta, you gotta get some red meat in there, right? You gotta have some, you know, problems and issues that need more of what I want to do into, right? So.
May be a moot point if they don't accept the conditions that our solicitor proposed.
Well, that's all I have. Well, that's all I have.
On 16B, building security, Mr. Rathke.
So I think the board knows, I mentioned a few weeks back, the IU had the Keeping Kids Safe seminar that Mr. Harris himself and Mr. Miller, and what kind of brought this back full circle was, I noticed, just this past week, in the recording I began, Mr. Miller had drills and it's part of one of the drills, he had a lockdown and he had, he had a counselor actually do that lockdown, that red, that one. But I noticed that BEUC and EDC did not, apparently what I saw, had, they did the weather and earthquake drills, but not, not a lockdown drill. So I guess, you know, I think we picked up, I think, a few good things from that seminar. I'd really like to see the district, I know we talked months ago, I think, maybe together, and not everything falls to money, I think there are some things we could do on a reasonable cost basis and something that should be put in place. You know, one of the things that many mentioned, you know, good practice is that the board should approve our, you know, safety and security policies every year or program out of requirement of the same. So I think we have opportunity to get ahead of any issues here. So I really think we need to do, we need to get some items in place to make sure that the kids are in the district safe as possible.
All right. Is there any public presentation on any issue?
Mr. Wolf, you were going to mention something about my attendance.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Temple, go ahead. We'll, we'll. Sorry? Yeah. No, no, I'll pick up another topic after you're done your comments.
This still isn't, this still isn't in the discussion stage of the 16, on this TV issue, right? You haven't decided on that yet. That should be done after. Did you include the bargaining unit? Did you ask them how they're going to get involved in this? Was they going to have to be involved as well? I mean, really, I mean, I think it's hard enough to get these children to learn and educate throughout the day than to have a bunch of money-hungry, that's all it is, money-hungry TV people. They're only here, they're only coming in here to make the money for themselves, they're not helping us. You gotta realize that. But if they're really going to help us, having at the end of the day, have a bunch of children at the end of the day, they still sequence the same kind of situation up and down the hallways with their cameras and all the editing and everything, which is great, I think. Wonderful that they learned this. But should get them in the day. You're just, I'm just thinking, you're causing a lot of problems in bringing that something out into the school like that.
Thank you, Mr. Temple.
Number one, in reference to Mr. Martinez, cost of living rates for Social Security versus where our school district tax increase has been since 2011, 8.8% for the cost of living raises for Social Security, 2.5% for our school district, just to make the facts there, leave it in context. Number two, I'd like to say that I'm really opposed to this idea of the reality shown in our school district. What happens, and we've all been teenagers, we've all gone past that, we know that we're not the widest, though, I think in 16, that's where you think you're the smartest. What happens if you say something wrong during that, during that final project that we can't control? What happens if that, if that occurs? And then pass forward 10 years, because video's out there forever, social media's out there forever, that's why we control it from our school handball. What happens if that prevents that child from getting ahead in the future? That's on your shoulders. Maybe we don't have legal recourse. We all know that a good contract has plenty of loopholes. What happens then? Is it worth $30,000 to potentially have that out there for the rest of our kids' lives? I mean, I know that we think this is for the best, but quite frankly, I wouldn't want my child saying anything on tape that's going to be out there for the rest of his life. So I'd really like to, you know, ponder that. And quite frankly, I'm not sure while we're paying a solicitor to review all these contracts, we haven't made the decision, if this is really an idea you want to do.
Okay, there were a couple of things that I wanted to address. The question that last meeting came up about Mr. Kurtz's attendance at the voting meetings. I did send out two corrected spreadsheets, I apologize for that. So over his 12 months, 12-month average, his 12 months, he has 67% attendance for the voting meetings. If you look at the calendar year, it's the same, it's the same percentage. So as we, we don't have, we don't count the July as a, we don't have any meetings in July. I didn't count special voting meetings in that, in that percentage also. But the discussion as far as going forward, how we track and keep, you know, not sure what the right word is, how, basically, how to keep track of any board member's attendance to qualify them to continue calling in remotely. It is part of our, is part of our procedure. It's under policy 006.1. So it's a regularly scheduled voting meetings, which I interpret to mean as this month, as this meeting in the month that we always vote on, that's normally scheduled. So we have one, 11 meetings a year. That's how I look at it. So, and you're going back, even though this says calendar year, I don't think that's really, could be practical, say, Mrs. Bitesman, you might want to look at the wording on that, because say, you started in January and you were at L and you couldn't make it, so you teleconferenced in. Well, technically, you couldn't participate then in February because you have a zero attendance at that point. So it really, I think, should be reflective of your period of time of service, maybe 12 months or whatever, whatever it would be, I think would be the appropriate. That's how I calculated it. So welcome any, any discussion along those lines.
Mr. Wolf, if I may, in recollection, Mr. Kurtz attended every meeting from January through June, which means he attended at least six voting meetings out of potential 11 for the year. So regardless, he's qualified.
Yeah, yes.
To continue calling in. Beginning tonight, I've started marking the roll. I've notated that he called in by phone. So I have a record, every meeting of who's here in person, who's not here, and who's on the phone.
And I did go back through the minutes for the various months, and you did have that notation in parentheses already. So yeah, continue to do that. My question, though, is how do we, how we track this? If it's going to be my responsibility as board president, you know, whoever succeeds me, is that, is it, if that's my responsibility, I'll take that to make sure that we all know if, if somebody's participation level falls below 50%, they're not permitted to vote. They can participate, but they can't vote via, when they get below the 50% participation. So welcome that discussion.
I thought that we had decided, we only had this discussion before. And again, it's one of these things, I guess, we keep hashing out, that both meetings must have been considered board meetings, which would make it, I think, 22 meetings a year then, like roll of this grade.
Yeah, the percentage is the same.
Okay, but my point is that I thought, it was my understanding when we hashed it out, that somebody, I thought it was the superintendent at the time, would actually preface each meeting, this is the blank meeting of the year, and so-and-so, if so, and everyone's in attendance. Or this is the blank meeting, and this is the fifth one that Mr. Kurtz is on the phone, sort of keeping a track that for public, you know, complete disclosure. I thought it was just about, you know, disclosing that goal.
I don't remember having that discussion.
I guess it was private, maybe it was more in committee than it was committee. Because I, I'll, I'll be honest, I thought, I thought when we, when we had the discussion the last time at a meeting of board, there was a strong stance that voting meetings, because I remember going back and forth, like, to me, I consider them at all meetings. But the faction at the time that wanted to stress, that said it's voting meetings, it's the second, there's only 11. So I think, in fact, I didn't thought policy was going to look at it again. I don't think they really made any changes. I think we left it the way it was. So, I mean, in my opinion, it's the 11 voting meetings. I don't recall what you're stating about somebody saying it could be in the meeting, but that might have happened at a committee.
I remember the discussion with Andrew about it, I don't know with the conference room. Do you want me to go back and check my notes?
Well, I would say, just take it to your policy. I think that the word calendar, I mean, again, if you, if you missed January's meeting, technically, and you participated by phone, technically, you can't participate in Jan, and in February.
Because of the wording of the policy.
Right, in the calendar year. So I think.
Mr. Wolf, does that mean, my understanding was that you cannot call in to a majority, more than half of meetings during a calendar year. But that isn't determined necessarily until the end of the calendar year. So you have, you have six months there. I don't know, it's just, I don't see it as, as working that way. I see it more as, I mean, there's no way to know whether or not in January, a board member will have called in to a majority of meetings, because a majority of meetings haven't, or at least half of the meetings haven't transpired yet. So I don't know if I am following you there, but perhaps I need to go back and look at the wording myself.
Yeah, Mrs. Bitesman, may I just suggest that you check your notes, take it back to policy, and then just come to something you can bring to the board to clarify.
Eight years past, we did not have the opportunity to call in. So we brought this forth, this was probably what, 2011?
Yeah, 10, 2010.
I thought that we, then we were discussing possibly a handful of times that you could call in. It wasn't something to abuse. It was only if you were on vacation or.
I think at the time Frank was traveling a lot for business and, yeah.
That started, I think, recording, recording, that's also something I'm taking.
Just for the board's indulgence, I can read the one sentence that's a target of discussion. Participation in meetings via communication device may not exceed the majority of all regularly scheduled voting meetings in a calendar year for any board member.
I know, but what's, what's the or, yeah.
So just wait, we want to keep track of this, is what you're asking.
Right, and I'll take that, I'll, you know, we think whoever, the position of board president should keep track of that, and I will, so.
And then you'll, can we have that posted?
Right in the minutes? There we go, right in the minutes, right.
So the vacation will be public?
Right.
Well, as far as maybe once.
Well, then you, to be fair, you should really be tracking, you should have a spreadsheet with everyone.
Right, right. As an example, you're elected, you should not miss.
Let me, let me, let me propose a format to you. I'll throw, I'll put it out to everybody, see what you think, and we'll just put it out there, you know, if you're, if you're present, you participate by phone or you're absent. The same criteria that I sent to everybody, that way, you know, that'll be, you know, listed what the person's participation is.
And Mr. Wolf, it might be prudent, just to put that on the website, too, on the board section of the school district's website, it can be updated after every meeting, showing the attendance. Because I know in the past, there have been issues with board members who just never showed up to meetings. That was before my time on the board at least, but I think that would be a good, like, dynamic way. I know Mr. Harris is in the process of developing different dashboard metrics that'll be available, and perhaps this can just be one more.
Okay, I'll take that as an action item.
Let me just wait in here, and I've never called into a meeting, but as far as announcing at the beginning of a meeting, who's called in as many times, everyone on the board has attended enough meetings this year to qualify. So unless there's a policy change, I don't see any need to be calling out that somebody missed two meetings, because they've already made enough.
Right.
You just, that's cheap.
If it's something that's out there for the public consumption, and then it's whoever the board president is, you know, to make sure that the policy's being followed.
This advice, maybe not, I don't know if it may change, not, but maybe a way to fix the calendar year is make it a 12-month rolling. So you just look back 12 months from the current month, and that, instead of, you know, four-year calendar year.
Well, maybe a little problematic for anybody that's new, but, okay. Mr. Kurtz, you are still non-committal about the November 14th meeting?
Yes, I'm going to, I'm working out of the area, and I am hoping to return for the meeting at the BCIU, however, I'm not, it's not 100% yet.
Okay. The reason I want to mention this is because though my anniversary is in September, my wife and I are going away on a, on our 30th anniversary, so I do not plan to call in or participate in any way in the board, in the board meeting. So I will not be here for the 14th, which would require the board to nominate a temporary board president to run that meeting. So Mr. Subers, could you provide the board with instructions of how that would actually transpire?
I think at the, at the actual meeting, the board secretary could call the roll and then ask for the appointment of a president pro-temporaries for that specific purpose.
But only if Mr. Kurtz is not here.
Correct.
Only if Mr. Kurtz is not here. And I would suggest that any, any paperwork that would be, anything that would be discussed that would be, wait until I get back for signature. Okay.
I have one more thing.
Sure.
This is our last meeting before the November 8 general election. Just to remind the board members, the administration, and the public, please vote.
In all fairness to the public, since we did have a few discussion items after the public comment, if anyone wants to comment again on anything, please.
One more quick thing.
Oh.
Sorry. And did this adjust under the items, the informational items? For the, I would just ask for the field trip requests? Usually we have one there, like it's paid for by the people that, like, who's taking the trip, or the county school funded, then the school can get that back on there, and kind of like that, against, could have problems when that's too long. School pays so much, but the students actually.
Great suggestion, Mr. Rathke, thank you. We're still, we're still breaking in our new.
And also, in case somebody wants to, boy soccer did win our district game, I think it's a balance.
Wow. Great. Public comment?
You're away a trip, we're, we're, I call it, every month, it's pretty cool. Does that go to the audio, does that go to V? Does that go to the, if you're that?
It's going to be recorded, the same as any other meeting. I don't know that we, we don't travel with the sound system.
A live, a live, a trade meeting at that night?
Yeah, yeah, that's a device.
We don't, we don't, yeah, we don't travel with the sound system, so it'll be microphones, so the audio quality may not be as good.
I don't think folks could do that, Skype would be right there, the screen is called to everyone, right?
Our policy doesn't allow for Skype anymore.
Allow Skype.
Wendy's Week, 1856 Old Street, I do this every year. Save trick or treat, Friday night, come see. night, come see all our high school students, our middle school students, and our elementary students in fashion, giving out stuff to the community, huge yarn night for Daniel Boone's school district, really, really cool, lots of costumes, lots of things, like, all you guys out, like, borrow a kid, or just find a kid, I think you use all sorts of candy. Sure, work on your knees, work in the candy. And some of us are doing the whole, like, turquoise pumpkin thing, like, a lot of us Greeks have always had non-candy items for kiddos, just on the back of our minds, and we're doing that, just always, gotta have the happiest once in a while, so thank you.
Thanks, Mrs. Sweet.
Regarding the reality show, you said it's gonna be mentors, are they previous students of Daniel Boone, the drop-down, or more, are they actors being brought in, is it somebody that wants to relive an experience that they skipped out on?
The latter, what you just said.
That they chose to skip out on, and we wanna bring that into our school, or potentially bring that into our school, distract our students who are there to get an education, to learn, not be distracted by cameras, the thought of being on television, the point of it being brought up, that kids say things that can be brought up years later, adversely affect them, I don't like that at all, I wouldn't want to put my child in a situation where potentially it is my fault, that 10, 15 years down the road, video, when they were an adolescent, prohibited them from getting a job, something along that lines. Second point I'd like to bring up, you discussed about not following procedure, I think Mr. Martinez said not following procedure for days off without pay, but that's one day, you get two meetings a month for the guy that can't make it, I understand it's on your phone, but it also is an elected position, you chose to be here, my feeling on that is if you're running for any position, calling in is not acceptable, as part of the community, I come here, I expect to see you, not hear you on the phone, thank you.
Can you make sure you sign in, please? Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Mr. Wolf, may I make a comment in light of the public comment, to see, maybe we should do a straw poll right now on the board, to see if there is enough will desire on the board to go forward with spending money on legal fees to pursue the reality show, or if we should, exactly how should we should handle that, because I'm not sure at this point, I would like to see any money spent until, regardless of fees and those, I'm leaning towards not, I'm just wondering if the board...
Okay, what's...
I think right now, we're waiting to hear from them, we don't, we're not doing anything else.
Well, Mrs. Bites, yeah, we're not deciding anything, because they, if they don't accept the terms that we've outlined, then it's a moot point.
Okay, so we can assume that we...
And we've already, we already expended...
...spend any more money considering it until we find out whether they accept it to terms so far.
We're waiting, we're waiting for them.
Because especially we said he was looking for more, I have a couple more things I'd like to add to that, and I was gonna dismiss it with him, but...
What I propose is just, I'll wait for their response, you can get my original suggested revisions and their response, and we'll view that and make a determination as to whether or not we should proceed on that basis.
Well, I think just the nine of us is not enough, I think, you know, we're the nine, and I believe that going forward, if we're even contemplating this, after we hear a positive or negative result, if it's positive, we're gonna entertain a little more, right? And I think we're gonna have a little more parents come forward, probably.
I think we should hear how they feel.
Yep. Good discussion, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment, any board comment seen done, need a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
We're adjourned. Mr. Trabowski and Mr. Potts.
Mr. Wolf, are we, no executive session?
No executive session, Connor.
All right.